So we have three speakers this morning here in McCroom. I'll just briefly introduce the three speakers. We have Kieran Nugent on my left, forestry inspector with the department. Paul DeGolieri on my far left here, who's the local Togas Forestry Advisor and covers County Cork and South Kerry. And we also have John Bernard in the front row here, who is a forest owner and has quite a lot of experience over the years. And John will relate some of those experiences, which I think will be useful this morning. So we thank John as well for coming available. So I won't stand in ceremony, so just to kick off, I will hand you over to Kieran Nugent, who will provide insights into the forestry programme. So over to you, Kieran.
Thanks, Tom. Morning, everybody. It's great to see a couple of familiar faces that we've been at events with before. And to be working with Tom again, it's a bit like the old days. I've been in this job for 24 years next month. And in that timeframe, we've seen lots of projects, lots of planting, lots of things done, and lots of changes in the programme in that time and in the forestry programmes that we've been delivering. And in that, it's been really interesting. I think Tom mentioned experts. It's been really interesting. The part that I've enjoyed the most in that timeframe is watching people who planted in the early stages when we were starting off, meeting those people again and looking at what they've done, what they've achieved with their planting, with their holdings in that timescale. And that's been brilliant. I think it's just interesting to have the event here in McCroom as well this morning. We're surrounded by literally a powerhouse of timber production, sawmills, all of these things are in this locality. And it's been a powerhouse for the forestry programme in this part of the country for a long time. So it's nice to have this event here. We want to talk about trees, we want to talk about the new programme and what we've been doing. You've probably read a lot about forestry in the last couple of months, in the last year, in the last few years, all of the different things. We have designed a programme to do lots of different things that we need to do at this point in time. The main thing we need to do is to establish and create more forests, more woodlands and more opportunities from that point of view. And we've designed the new programme to achieve some of that. What we have essentially, we've put together an integrated suite of measures. There's lots of different schemes, there's lots of different elements in this. There's almost something for everybody at every stage of forest management, forest development in this, to do the things that we need to do and to animate the work that we need to get going. And that's aligned with our climate programme, our National Biodiversity Action Plan, the National Climate Strategy, and a lot of other rural development and economic drivers, economic requirements that we have. And what we want to try and do is to create a solid financial incentive for forest creation for landowners. If you want to create a forest, here are the tools and here's the resources to do that. And in that as well, we've tried to break from the old ways of doing things. We have a lot of innovation in the new programme. We have a lot of new elements in our forestry programme, things like agroforestry, continuous cover forestry, close to nature type things, and water protection elements that we didn't have previously. We've now built into this programme and we're actively supporting. And again, at the same time, we're doing a lot for biodiversity, we're doing a lot for climate. We're trying to maintain that commercial impetus, that we still have a commercial programme, we still have timber production. We need the timber, our housing crisis, all of these things that people want new products from, new timber products. We need to be able to feed those. On your seats, you'll see a pack of materials there, all of the booklets, the various things, all of the scheme details for the individual schemes are in those booklet. All of the basic information that you want are in those. And we have on the link, you'll see the QR code element on some of the screens and some of the backdrops around the room. To access this on the department's website, all of the information that you want is there and it's on paper in the booklets in front of you. So we're here to talk about planting, we're talking about aforestation or aforestation scheme. And our aforestation scheme is designed to increase our forest cover and at the same time deliver ecosystem services with environmental and climate benefits, as Tom has said. We've changed what was GPC, granted premium categories, we've changed that around slightly to become forest types. There's 12 of those. And of those, some of those are new, things like Forests for Water, the Emergent Woodland element. Myself and Dara here, we drove through Glenfles this morning, looking at new forests naturally establishing on the hills. How do we reward landowners for those? We have a scheme for that, the Emergent Woodland Scheme. And we have schemes to animate and encourage continuous cover forestry within those. From the start, people can plant their forests with continuous cover forestry in mind from the outset. And again, we've significantly increased our grant and premium rates to try and keep landowners interested and to keep pace with other schemes. There's a licence required, we have the licensing system is up and running, it's well established at this point. And we have a lot of improvements in that, so you can track your licence application as it goes on. We have our customer service charter, we're hitting licences now between six to nine months, nine months for a more difficult setting and six months for the most simple ones. And we're satisfied that we're able to do that. And we have fairly stringent environmental assessment, environmental considerations that we apply on applications and we're doing that, we have been doing that. We've been running the aforestation scheme now for just over a year. We've had to create a lot of the tools that we needed to do this and those tools are now working, they're working well for us. And we're able to tune our system to produce our licences. So again, to go back to the types of forest, there's a lot of talk about native woodlands. We have two types of native woodland categories, FT1 and FT2. FT1 is a typical native woodland oak and birch and things like that. And FT2 is a new scheme, Forests for Water, forests that are specifically designed to protect water bodies and water resources. We have the Emergent Forest for woodland that's developing naturally. And we have FT67 for general broadly, like Sycamore and Beech and so forth. Agroforestry, Eugene Kearns in the room, there's our agroforestry expert, John Casey is here, they're agroforestry specialists. This is a really exciting space. We've had a lot of work done in this area, it's a very new space. And even by European standards, I think the agroforestry measure that we have is quite interesting, that it caters for both timber and farming in the same space. And we can overlap our farming activity and forestry activity on the same land, on the same hectare. Do both and get more out of the land. And that's been working well, it's not a new, we have the initial stages, the initial test sites for that are giving us really good, we're getting really good feedback on this. And there's a lot of interest in this so far in the new programme. Continuous cover forestry is a lot of new interest in this. Again, getting into a more close to nature management of forests and a more steady state supply of timber. And I think that's been quite, there's a lot of interest with landowners on that, forest owners on that. And we're seeing more projects of this type annually being developed. And it's obviously a very complex area, but it's one that people do not seem to be afraid of. And forest owners have been engaging with this quite well. We have our FT11, which is for diverse conifers, things like Western Red Cedar, Douglas Fir. And FT12, which is the mainstay of the industry, which is our diverse Sitka Spruce plantations for timber production. And obviously, we've had a lot of experience with those in the last few years. So about 50% of what we're doing at the moment is broadly. We're seeing a mix and a lot of interest in both categories by landowners, but we're seeing a lot of native woodland applications coming in from owners. And again, the premium structure, when you look at it for farmers is back, we've put that premium system back to a 20-year premium period. And when you work that out for native woodland over 20 hectares with a 20-year premium run, you're looking at an overall payment of about 176,480 euros in premiums alone. So that's quite a significant payment over that timescale. And we have, again, for mixed high forest, which would be FT12 type forest, 179 over 20 years, 179,040 euros. And that's again, from the premium alone, that's before we start to talk about the timber values at that level of 30 acres, 12 hectares. Okay, so they're quite significant potential income streams for landowners. And I think it's about then balancing both of these types and to produce projects that can deliver in the long run in terms of financial outcomes. And obviously then, the biodiversity elements of it, the climate elements of it, they're going to come in their own way as we're doing that. The agroforestry is quite interesting and the native forest, there's two new types, the native tree area scheme is quite new. And agroforestry, these are 10-year premium cycles. But again, with agroforestry, you're still maintaining the farming activity on the land, you're maintaining the farming payments on the land. You're able to stack those up. And for people in the organic schemes and so on, there are other payments that you can unlock using the agroforestry measure. And again, you're looking at an annual premium of 4,875 euros per hectare on that over the 10 years. For the native tree area scheme is a new scheme that we've developed, it's a light scheme. It allows us to issue a permission to plant. It's not a licence, but we issue a consent to plant much more quickly. And it's in predefined areas, you've got to check that there's no background constraints, there are environmental checks on it. But it allows us to deliver that permission much more quickly on a smaller area. And that's limited to one hectare. And you can come back if you have, like the Forests for Water, if you have a water body on the land, you can go again for a second hectare of land that will protect a water course. And you're looking at 22,000 euros over 10 years under that scheme. So it's quite, it's a new scheme and we're still trying to figure out, and landowners, how are people going to respond to this and what the uptake is going to be. Today, it gives us a reasonably strong incentive, I think, for that. And yeah, I've covered most of the things here. The areas that are involved are typically not used for farming and are areas that they won't be used on. Like agroforestry, you won't be using them for farming afterwards. And they're retained then as forest on the long term. It's a 10-year premium, but it's important to note that with this scheme, the premium rate is the same as for the general aforestation premium for native woodland compressed into that 10-year space. So it's almost twice the premium compressed into that 10-year space. And so then, look, in terms of getting on with it then, the information is there. We're here to help you with that information for your own specific requirements this morning. We're going to help you with that as much as we can from the different agencies. And again, the first steps to this are to discuss with your farm advisor, if you're farming, to make sure that the schemes that you're going into is a fit for yourself. To engage a registered forester, we have a list there of registered foresters available, that's also on the department's website. To find somebody to help you, a registered forester, professional foresters who'll help you develop your application and submit that application to us using the IFRS and INET systems, they're all electronic. And once we have your completed application, you can track that on our tracking system, on our forest licence sphere and a licence tracker that we have. And we're looking at a six to nine month application process. Six months at a minimum for simple areas with low constraints and up to nine months for the higher constraint. And we're tied into a customer service charter on those. So we're looking forward to seeing how that works. And they're really the first steps really to get on board. Some of you have already planted, you may wonder, you may be interested in coming back in again. And I think that's to be encouraged. And as I said before, I think when we look back at the experience that people have had to date who've planted, it's by and large been a positive one. And in terms of what people are doing, people who own forests, what they've achieved with those and the level of complexity that owners are now working with, with the forests that they're dealing, the results that they're getting is really impressive. It's been one of the most rewarding parts of my work to date is watching that and listening and seeing how the expertise in managing forests has almost transferred across into some of those growers that they're working. And the forest owner groups, the producer groups, those types of mechanisms are a real driver to that. So we have, just on top of the other elements, we have a number of support schemes that we just wanted to reference. We have other, like, as I said at the start, there's something almost for everybody in the programme that we have. We have a lot of other schemes coming on online. We have our Forest Road Scheme, our Forest Road Scheme target for the year in our Forest Licensing Plan, that's already been delivered. We have the ASH Dieback Scheme, that's in place and that's been running, we've 3,000 hectares of approvals on that to date. We have an innovative forest technology scheme to keep our machinery, our trucks, all of that stuff, to keep the technology in the industry up to date, to make sure that forest owners can access that technology when they need it from our contractor sector. We have a climate resilient reforestation scheme to help people with reforestation and putting native forests back into some of the areas where we might want those in existing forests. And we have things like the Woodland Improvement Scheme and the Native Woodland Conservation Scheme. These are coming on stream as we're speaking in the last parts of this year. And allowing owners to engage with existing woodlands and improve those and update those. So in the overall programme, as I say, there's something for almost every forest owner at every stage. There's a package there. And to make these forests work and to make it a goer, our main task here today is with aforestation, the creation of woodland. And we also have a whole palette of different options for people in that space.
Our next speaker is my colleague, Paul DeGolieri, who's based here in McCroom and works out in the McCroom office and covers counties Cork and also South and Mid Kerry. So I'll hand you over to Paul for the next presentation.
Perfect, thanks very much, Tom. Hello, like Tom said, my name is Paul DeGolieri, I'm based here in McCroom and covering Cork and South Kerry. I suppose just to touch on what Kieran said earlier, as he mentioned, he was 24 years on the job. I suppose I'm coming from a different point of view, where this is my second year on the job. So I'm coming from, I suppose, a different point of view, where I suppose I'm looking at forestry in my future or in the future, what's ahead of me. And I'm quite confident that there is a place for forestry in almost every farm, in one forest type or the other, whether it be the native trees or along the ways of Sitka Spruce. But I suppose what we're mainly focusing on is on diversification and what will suit on what farm. So I suppose just to set the scene, the 51% of forestry in Ireland is privately owned, which is coming up to about 12% of the land cover in Ireland altogether in forestry owned. I suppose that 51% there that is privately owned shows how important private owners are and that they are the majority of rule of forestry in Ireland. The wood product exports about 600, over 600 million in 2023. So it is obviously a valuable sector to the country and a large income coming out of it. 9,400 full-time employees and mainly in rural areas. And of course, the valuable ecosystems as well that we found, especially during Covid, that we had the value we had on our doorsteps even for walking around for biodiversity. And what's coming up a lot in a farming setting is water quality and diversification then as well. So there is a lot of value to forestry in Ireland and I suppose it's just trying to realise what values it can be and I suppose opening our minds of what forestry might be. So I suppose just to highlight about getting into forestry and the options that are there. The first thing me or any of my colleagues tend to ask is what do you want from forestry or what do you want from a forest? Whether it be biodiversity reasons for a pension plan for income, long term or short term, or to just diversify the farm income or diversify income in general. So that's generally the first step. And what I'm going to cover now today as well is how it affects your farm and your whole farm planning. Because every farm is different, you might be involved in different schemes. And I suppose the reason why we wanted to break out into one-to-one sessions after this is because everyone is in different schemes and it will apply to everyone differently. So that opportunity is great to go over what schemes you are in and how they may affect if you are interested in going into forestry. And once you have your whole farm planning, which you can approach Chaggis Forestry, either if you're in Cork or South Kerry, you could approach myself or any one of my colleagues according to the area. And we can start that process and go through your options with it. If you go for eligibility then, it's going into a registered forester and checking your eligibility on the ground and checking what grants are available for you as well. The application must go through a registered forester. And once the application goes in and into the department, hopefully comes back approved and then monitoring your progress, especially for the first couple of years, the first four or five years where the forestry is getting established is where most of the work is at and where most of the tending goes to. And I suppose as most people know, after that then it kind of tends to take off and it'd be quite labour efficient then after that. So when it comes to the whole farm planning, like I said, setting your objectives and what you want out of the forest is always question one from us when it comes from Chaggis. And how would it affect your farm enterprise and what benefits you want out of it? Whether it be animal welfare, whether it's shelter, tax and labour efficiencies, enhancing farm sustainability, diversifying your income or environmental or social. There are some great social options either in the neighbourhood scheme or any schemes like that. You could have an on-farm timber supply and a family resource to enjoy. I suppose coming from that, like, again, I'm going to mention Covid again, and having woodlands on your doorstep tended to be a massive bonus for a lot of people during that time. And they really found the value in that when they couldn't go anywhere else. Like I said, you can have a future focus in retirement or inheritance. And it can also be a great way of passing wealth, especially for those tax incentives. I know no one enjoys paying tax. I'll touch on the interactions with the farm schemes and the enterprises. And a point we always try to make and to highlight is that it is a permanent land use change. It's not something we're going to jump into and decide we're going to go into in the next day and make an application. It is something we have to consider when putting in an application and to decide is forestry suitable for you and your farm enterprise and really weigh out all the options before, I suppose, jumping into it. So under the new scheme that came out last year, there is farmer and non-farmer premiums. So to qualify as a farmer for that farmer premium, the 20 years. So the BIS scheme, the basic or basic payment or single farm payment, as you might know it as, essentially you have to have four years continuous applications, approved applications for the BIS or BPS or whichever way you're familiar with it. So just for an example there, if you're applying for forestry today in 2024, you must have submitted a valid BIS application in 23 and 24 and also a BPS in 20 and 21. Or 21 and 22, sorry. A positive interaction, positive interactions with other farm schemes. So BIS and forestry, there is eligibility with it. I suppose some foresteries and some foresters may be known as eligible forestry or non-eligible forestry. I'm not going to go into the difference between that, but it would be important if you have forestry to determine if your forestry is eligible or non-eligible for payments. So if it's under the right for BPS, it must meet all the requirements. And like this for our breakouts, this would be something we'll be able to help out. Or in the future, you'll be able to contact one of us to assist in checking the criteria and to see if your forestry is eligible forestry or non-eligible forestry. CRIS, some of you might be in CRIS, which is essentially to help smaller farmers, known as the Completely Redistributable Support for Sustainability Scheme. I suppose the main takeaway from this is eligible forestry can come in under this and can include eligible forestry under your CRIS payments. So acres, a lot of people are in acres, it's a very popular scheme. There is good compatibility with acres and forestry. You can split parcels from acres to facilitate new planting. The area you are planting, you'll split, you can keep the rest in acres. But the area you'll be planting then will come out of acres and go into forestry. It's also permitted to move parcels from acres to forestry as long as the, as long as the new commitment is considered equal or higher benefits. And existing acre commitments, you must be in it for two years, which most people will be in at this stage. So that shouldn't be an issue. So the organic farming. The organic farming is a good opportunity within forestry, it works well and a great opportunity within it. You can convert any parcel of forestry into, or sorry, any parcel of organic farming into any forest type without penalty. And you can also qualify for your organic payment and forestry payments with our Forest Type 8, which is agroforestry. And that actually has a great opportunity to get essentially three payments on the same ground. You can get your BIS and CRIS, you can get your agroforestry, you can also get your organic payments at a dry stock rate, all on the same land parcels, which is a great opportunity to, I suppose, to stack up on payments on the same piece of ground. Areas of national consent, some of you may be in it, some of you aren't. I suppose category one there is our kind of more mountainous regions or most severe regions and kind of getting less constrained as we go through two and three. Category one you can see is the highest payments and the maximum area is 34 hectares. And then for category two and category three, your maximum area is 30 hectares. I suppose the takeaway point from this is forestry and ANC are not payable on the same ground. So if you want to plant ground which is in ANC, you will be losing your payments for ANC if you did want to plant that in forestry. But there's obviously, there's opportunities for farmers who have large farms. So if they're over the 34 or the 30 hectares that are eligible for ANC, they can plant above that 30 or 34 hectares and still their ANC won't be affected because they're within the maximum threshold. I suppose an example here is a farmer planting 10 hectares of agroforestry. He has 35 hectares altogether and we're assuming that he has BIS, CRIS and ECO scheme in ANC category two, which is a maximum of 30 hectares, and he's in organics. So he wants to plant, or he has planted 10 hectares of agroforestry. So the average payment per hectare for BIS is 154 euro per hectare. So you multiply that by 35 and you get her figure at the end, 5,300. CRIS, the average price or the average payment for that was 43 euros per hectare. We multiply that by 30, get her 1,290. Our ECO scheme, we multiply by 35 hectares, the average payment was 67, we got her 2,000. ANC, we're paying 25, or we're multiplying that by, we have two payments, the first 10 hectares and the second 15 are different payments, but it came down to 25 hectares, just to note that because we lost out on 10 hectares because we planted some in agroforestry. We're getting organics at 300 euros by 35 for this year. It will change from year three to five, but for this situation, we'll keep it at 300 by 35, which is our 10,500. And then our agroforestry payments then is 9,75 multiplied by 10, which is our 9,000. And that all comes up to the 31,945, which is a net gain of 8,710 because we lost a small bit of area in ANC. But I suppose the main takeaway point is that there's a net gain of planting agroforestry within that then as well. And I suppose the great part of this is just kind of getting some figures on paper and on how it can be useful and it can diversify your money coming in as well. So I suppose just the take-home messages that we want to highlight before we move on. As forestry can fit in well with farming, like I said at the start. I do feel that there is a place for forestry in one way or another in almost every farm, whether it be Wood for Water or Sitka Spruce or agroforestry. I think there's many benefits to a lot of the forestry and there's, especially the 12 forest types that we have, there's a great advantage to having forestry, either financially, biodiversity, protecting our water, which is becoming a big topic in farming today and finding ways to protect your water. which is becoming a big topic in farming today and finding ways to protect your water and still get paid for it then as well. And I suppose for ourselves to be aware that we are here and support is available to make these decisions. You don't have to do it in the dark, you don't have to do it on your own, that we are there. Chaggis provide one to one, we do on-farm visits, we do sessions like today and we do outdoor events where we'd be more practical based as well. We also have our social media then as well, like our Instagram, great videos on our YouTube. And our website can be very helpful on any information or direct questions you may have. And of course, our information will be there as well and you can contact us directly. Thanks very much. If you wanted to contact me, my email is there and I'll be around afterwards as well to answer any questions.
Okay, Pardig, thanks very much for that. So we'll now move on to our third speaker this morning. And that speaker is a forest owner who's very well experienced over the years. And John is experiencing both broadleaf and conifer. And over the years as well, I think John has been very helpful in facilitating farm walks and events on his land. So I'm just going to hand you over to John. Okay, welcome, John.
Morning, everyone. My name is John Bernard, I come from Riversticke. I grew up on a mixed farm with the main enterprise at the time being Daring. I attended Rockwell Agricultural College in the early eighties. And the following year when I came home, milk quotas were introduced. So whatever plans ahead of making a few extra cows, that was out the window. So in nineteen ninety two, we purchased a block of land near Killarney with milk quota. I wasn't at the time fully convinced of forestry, but had a very good Tegas advisor at the time, Mr. Petty Ronan. And he outlined all the benefits of the forestry, the planting grants and premiums and so on. So we went ahead and planted it and looked just very thankful to it all along the way. It is mainly Sycamore spruce with five acres of ash there. Then in nineteen ninety eight, we purchased another field next door to us at home. And after doing that, we had one very hilly paddock. So we planted that with beech and oak. And it was an unusual mix, but it was every second row. Now it's twenty five years old, the beech has muddered the oak out completely. But look, I suppose it's a form of natural tinning in one sense. Look, we live within a half a mile of Riversticke Village. And this gives great privacy to our farmyard. It's maybe twenty five, thirty feet tall at this stage. There's a stream running at one end of it. So look, it works also as a good buffer zone for the stream. As I said, it's extremely fertile. Look, if I never cut timber out of it for aesthetic reasons, it was well worth doing it. Look, it's lovely to see the seasons come and go on it. This time of year, you have your golden leaves and so on. And in the spring, you have your new foliage. And look, by around the tenth of May, it's in full bloom, the new foliage. And you know, at that stage, winter is well and truly behind you. Then in, what did I say, two thousand, everyone knows the country was awash with money and people were investing in everything and anything. And I went to Roche Stone Park one night where there was a crowd putting on a display and selling apartments in Budapest overlooking the Denab and selling a grand flowery picture. And most of us know up at Aldo's investments finished up, they weren't all that were promised. So I bought another block of land in North Cork. And the adjoining neighbour thought the block I bought was better than his farm. So believe it or not, we actually swapped blocks of land, strange thing to do. But I had a great caretaker and him for, you know, and look, I could call it many times or he would ring me and say such and such a thing was happening and so on and so forth. Look, and it's great to work with your neighbours because without your neighbours, you don't have anything. And I think it should be, you know, just think of your neighbours as well when you're doing things like that. And then in twenty sixteen, oh yeah, I said that was mainly Sycamore spruce and large plantation. And in twenty sixteen, the farm directly across the road from us at home came up for sale. And look, I decided to cash in the block of land in North Cork. Just shows, look, there's a market for semi-mature plantations. There was, as well, there was no problem. Look, there was actually a big demand for semi-mature plantations, look, for probably say pension funds and other people like that who want to invest. There are some of the money, we're just surprised, the amount of money that's out there with some people. And look, as I said, we bought a block of land at home. And look, that the land in North Cork partially financed it. And I suppose, look, also I'm very fortunate, I have a son who is as passionate about farming as I am. Look, he did a BA and he's at home with me now full time with the past two years. Look, I suppose it wasn't all plain sailing, we all had a few bumps along the road as well. In twenty seventeen, we started tinning the ground near Killarney. That particular year, storm or phylia, he says everyone remembers, and it was fairly severe. We were after putting in harvesting rows and a turntable and we had just commenced tinning. And look, we got the wind blow, so we called it a halt to the tinning at that stage. We had to replant what was blown. But look, as I said, we'd leave it there then without that. And also in that particular place, as I mentioned earlier, I had five acres of ash, which got hitched with dieback. And look, at the moment, we're in the process of doing paperwork and we'll replant that again. One thing I can say about forestry, look, it made our home farm very sustainable and viable. I know they say money doesn't grow on trees, but it's one way of putting a good tax-free lump sum of money together. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our short presentations for this morning. Again, I thank the speakers and we'll start the one to one session at this stage. And can I just thank you again for your attendance this morning and hope you get something out of the remainder of the session as well.